Hello and welcome to the Community Engagement Segment of the Planning Commissioner Training. My name is Melissa Keen, I'm a Senior Program Manager with the Institute for Local Government, which is part of the statewide technical assistance team for this project. I'm joined today by my colleague Hannah Stalmakovich, who's a Program Manager with ILG as well.
Let's discuss public engagement, but first let's clarify the terms. What do we mean when we say "public engagement"? You see a few terms on your screen including civic engagement, public information and outreach, marketing and advertisement, and public engagement. All these terms mean a little bit different things. Civic engagement in its involvement in civic and political life of your community. Think about cleaning the parks, cleaning the rivers and beaches, helping someone with something, that is civic engagement, community is active, community is involved. Public information and outreach, it's one-way local government communication to inform your residents about, for example, housing development or any other upcoming public engagement projects. Public information and outreach is going to be part of every engagement because you do need to inform what is happening and invite your residents to participate in those projects. There's marketing and advertisement that sometimes can be confused with public engagement as well. When it comes to housing development projects, we would like our communities to improve those housing development projects. So we do promote those projects, projects is a really good thing for the community, but sometimes that promotion can be a little bit pushy. We're disseminating those promotional messages across various community channels, again, to inform the community, sometimes these messages can be paid. And what we've learned from our experience, community can really know when you're marketing and advertising the projects such as housing development project. And finally, there's public engagement. Public engagement is a two-way communication. Not only you're informing your community what is happening, what is on the horizon, what are you planning, but also you're actively asking community for feedback. How the housing development project should look like? In which area of your jurisdiction should the housing development project be? And also to do public engagement, you use a variety of different messages and methods. You engage your community in person, you engage your community online, you meet them where they are, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. So again, public engagement is a broad range of methods to inform and collect feedback from your community. Why should we do public engagement? What are the benefits of that? When you do intentional, authentic, and inclusive public engagement and you're really looking for the community to enhance your project and make it better and make sure it serves the community and meet community goals, there are a variety of benefits of this engagement. First of all, you better identify the public values, ideas, and recommendations, and you craft this vision for your community collectively. It's not just coming from you, but community is informing. What does it mean to have a new housing development in your city or county? How should it look like? The values are identified and your account for these values or developer account for those values as you design those housing projects. Community engagement is always very beneficial because at the very minimum, your residents will be informed. As I mentioned, outreach and outreach will be part of every engagement. You wanted to inform, you want to educate. Community is not only going to be informed what's happening in the community, but also how local agencies govern and who is responsible for what. For education is always a good benefit of any engagement. Public engagement improves local agency decision and actions with better impacts and outcomes. Again, when we work with our communities collaboratively, decision-making is just better because alternatives and interesting solutions may arise that individuals have not considered before. Authentic, inclusive, and intentional public engagement definitely lead for more community support end by end. Projects can be contentious, contentious definitely. However, with a well-structured and thoughtful engagement with inclusive engagement, potentially leads to less contentiousness overall. Again, with good community engagement, it's you have faster project implementations with less needs to revisit because these revisions have taken place as you do your community engagement. Authentic, inclusive, and intentional public engagement does generate more trust within the community, between the community members, and trust in local governments. Again, in some cases, public engagement is not required. However, depending on the project, you might strongly consider designing inclusive and authentic community and engagement that can lead to all these outcomes that I just mentioned. As you're designing and implementing your public engagement and outreach, you really have to think about equity. As you can see on the right-hand side of your screen, you see a picture that depicts what equality means and what equity means. Equality is about giving everyone the same tools. In case of this picture, everyone gets a box to see the soccer game. However, as you can see on the other picture that depicts equity, not everyone needs the same box. In fact, giving everyone the same box to stand upon is not going to lead to see, to everyone seeing the game. The person on the left doesn't need a box at all, he can see it well. The person in the middle actually needs two boxes to see the game. And the person on the right doesn't need box, but the person needs a ramp to actually get on it and see the game. So equity means identifying those unique needs that individuals have and providing those resources and opportunities to, to address those needs. How does it, how do we factor this in public engagement? Definitely considering early, what are the needs of the community to participate in your public engagement? To receive good enough information to provide informed feedback? So providing those opportunities to participate and provide informed feedback is that's how you're achieving equity through public engagement. Involve in traditionally unengaged groups such as low-income residents, busy folks with children, working families, renters, folks that don't speak English very well. Those folks who have been left out of the decision-making in the past, those folks who need additional resources to participate in your engagement processes, that's absolutely critical for advancing equity. Think about those groups in advance, who you need to involve, and be intentional how you're reaching out to them and designing engagement processes for those groups. Finally, advancing equity through public engagement is really preventing and mitigating adverse impacts and unintended consequences of communities of colors and other vulnerable groups. So what does it mean? It's figuring out early and in advance what type of negative impacts those proposed projects will be generated and impacting those vulnerable groups, and figuring out with the community how to mitigate those impacts as you develop the project early on. So how do we ensure equitable engagement? Again, it's all about identifying the barriers to participation, barriers to participation specifically of those vulnerable groups that I briefly mentioned earlier, and figuring out how, what can we provide to address those barriers? For example, if folks have low English language proficiency, they may not feel comfortable participating in your meeting because simply they will not understand or have troubles expressing their feedback. That's where we provide translation and interpretation. For working families who are very busy and they are not able to come at 6:00 PM to your public engagement workshop, you might consider setting this up at different times, maybe on the weekends, so they have opportunity to participate. You might consider for in-person workshops to provide childcare so working families don't have to figure out what to do with their child, children while they're learning and providing that feedback about your project. For example, for folks, for senior folks who are not very proficient in technology and all your engagement is online, they may not have opportunity to participate. So you might want to figure out what are some additional alternative participation opportunities for those folks? What are some in-person methods or what some of the easy online technologies they, they can actually use? Equitable engagement is very important to plan it with the community. Ask for the community what groups need to be engaged. Ask community members how, what type of barriers do you anticipate to participation? And finally, ask community for the suggestions. How can I design this public engagement and outreach so it can reach various groups and provide solutions to those participation barriers?
Thanks Hannah. So as we continue to have this conversation about community engagement, we wanted to share this graphic which comes from the International Association for Public Participation. I mean, it's a spectrum of public engagement. So you see this on your screen here, the different range of opportunities and ways that you can, you all as local agencies can work with your community. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see INFORM, which is similar to some of the points Hannah was making around public information and outreach and communication. That's again, that information out to your community. As Hannah also mentioned though, there's usually a place for that type of engagement and that type of communication in some of these more complex, hard-to-understand projects that you might be having come online for your community. So making sure that they understand the questions that you're asking them and the feedback that you're, you're asking them to provide. As you work your way across the spectrum, you see consult and involve and collaborate. This is more engagement in your community. This is again, that two-way communication, that feedback loop where you're really asking for design comments or maybe you're, you're building a park and you want information about the types of amenities that folks want to see there and different things like that. So this is where you're really starting that two-way dialogue and creating that feedback loop. And then on the far right-hand side of the screen there, you see EMPOWER, and that would be essentially turning decision-making authority over to the community, which doesn't happen very frequently in local government and may not always be the, the best choice for your city or county. But this, this graphic is really just to illustrate that there's a lot of different ways to do this and a lot of different levels of engagement that you can pursue with your community. The important thing to think about here is really trying to figure out where you are on this spectrum. What are the goals of your engagement? What information are you seeking from them? What is your timeline, maybe budget, your staff capacity to do these types of things? So for example, if you have a project that may be going to your councilor board in the next week or two, you're probably not in the involve or collaborate area of this graphic. You're probably more on the inform, you know, this is what we've heard, this is where we are in the process, this is the next step. So just really aligning your goals and this is kind of a reality check of where you are in terms of that involvement and what you're asking for from your community to help manage their expectations. You're not asking them for information you can't use or don't need, all of those types of things. One thing I do want to acknowledge, as we're going through some of this content, particularly as we start talking about tools and strategies, you all as planning commissioners are not going to be responsible for the, the strategy or implementation of this. We just want to share some of these things with you so you can be asking questions of your staff team or really helping set that culture of engagement in your city or county. You know, asking for, for information about what the community has said or what community engagement has been done on a project or things like that. But no expectation that you as commissioners are designing and implementing this yourselves. So this is definitely a staff-led effort usually. So we wanted to share some of the in-person and then the next slide we'll share some virtual options with you all on how to do this. So we were just talking about making sure you understand where on the spectrum you are. But this illustrates that there's a lot of ways you can do that. So even if you, you know, you're just in that inform space, there's still options on the table in terms of what that looks like. It could be an open house or a town hall or maybe just a fact sheet. And as again, you work your way across that spectrum, that more, you see that more interactive, more engagement focus around surveys and polls or workshops and focus groups or advisory committees, et cetera. So that's again, really more involvement of the community, more feedback, often more time and sometimes more budget required to get some of these things done. This is the same slide obviously, but with some virtual options. So what the last few years have taught us in that pivot to the virtual spaces that most of the things that we can do in person, we could also do in a virtual space at this point. So you'll see some similarities. These would just be online meetings or online polls and workshops as opposed to the in-person format that we might have been doing a few years back. So similar thoughts here from INFORM, online newsletters, your website, blogs, moving across the spectrum, online polls and surveys, online forums and workshops, all of those types of things. So this is just to get the juices flowing and start thinking through what some of these strategies and tools might look like. This slide illustrates that there's a lot of tools out there at your, your city or county's disposal to do this work. Some of these are just a single type of platform where you have just, it's just a polling tool or it's, it's just a video tool or things like that. And as you again, work your way across the spectrum, some of the tools you see towards the right of your screen do a number of different things. Sometimes they have a mapping component to them or maybe there's a survey functionality built in and a discussion board and you can link it to your, your public meeting agendas and all of those types of things. So not endorsing any one of these tools over the others, but just again, to let you know that there's a lot of tools that can help your agency do this and really thinking about what your needs are and then making the decision about, about what the tools might need to look like to achieve those goals. So I want to spend a little bit of time talking about how to handle difficult situations because we obviously recognize that that happens in a, in a community engagement space in public meetings. So some thoughts and, and things to think about as you might be in some of these situations in a public hearing or a workshop or a board or council meeting. So before I get into this, I also want to acknowledge that this is obviously easier said than done in some of these spaces. So just some things to think about, keep in the back of your mind as you might be in these situations. So think about encouraging and practicing active listening. That may be more appropriate for some of your interactive meetings that you have as opposed to a board meeting, and there's whole trainings that go along with, with active listening, but it's things like paraphrasing or mirroring body language or summarizing comments that you're hearing to really make sure that the person you're talking to is really feeling heard and, and they know that you understand what they're saying. Being respectful, that's kind of an across-the-board one. You know, not talking over people, not, you know, being combative in, in some of your comments or the dialogue back, allowing people to, everyone to speak, all of those types of things. And again, trying not to respond in kind to derogatory or insulting comments. So just trying to take that step back, let them make their point, make their comment in, in a public meeting setting, if you watch that part of the, the training, obviously there's some limitations on what you all as, as appointed officials can do and, and say back to folks during a public comment, but even in, in a broader workshop or meeting perspective, just really trying to, to not escalate some of that dialogue. So related to that, also trying to identify and respond to the substance of the question. And again, not like the tone or tenor that it might be given in. So maybe somebody's very upset or very passionate about a subject, but really trying to get past how they're delivering that comment and really get to the question so that you can respond to that question if appropriate, or at least just make sure that you're, you're understanding and hearing what that person is trying to say. If it's appropriate, so again, maybe not on the dais, but in other types of workshops or meetings. Ask the person to explain their point more fully. Make sure you again, understand, ask those clarifying questions or see if they can rephrase the comment if it's just really coming out very negative or, or challenging. So giving them an opportunity to maybe explain or, or rephrase or just get again to that, the substance of that question or comment. But I'm sure nobody, nobody's had experience with this next point where if somebody doesn't feel heard, they're going to talk louder and louder and louder and, and repeat themselves again and again and again, or maybe get more emotional or, or just ha, just change their demeanor as, as they don't feel heard. So thinking about strategies to make sure that folks feel heard and you're capturing their comments. So some of the strategies earlier on the slide can help you do that, but there's also additional strategies in terms of make sure, if you're in a public workshop, somebody's taking notes. Maybe it can be flip charted or put on a whiteboard or something where they literally can see the comment that they've made be reflected in the notes that are being taken at the meeting. So just some, some tactics to think through there. And then the last bullet here is to, to the degrees realistic, which we acknowledge in a housing and land use space, and there's a lot of these, but trying to avoid loaded or unclear terms, things like jargon, and I would add acronyms to this list as well. Lots of times we in local government world get very bogged down. We use these terms all the time and then forget that the general public maybe doesn't, doesn't live in that same world and doesn't understand all of the, the intricacies and jargon and acronyms that we might use on a daily basis. So continuing on, so if you're in a public, if you're in a public meeting and you have a facilitator, which is something that we would recommend, if you know a topic's going to be really contentious, you have somebody that's a third party, maybe not affiliated with the city or county, that can really be seen more as neutral, that they don't have, you know, any, any stake in that game essentially. So if you're in one of those situations, facilitators can, can be helpful in terms of reviewing and enforcing meeting ground rules. So maybe when you started the meeting, everybody agreed on this is how we're going to operate. The facilitator can always refer back to that. You know, we agreed at the beginning of the meeting, we were going to let everybody speak on a topic before we moved on or that we were only going to speak for X amount of time, et cetera. So that they can kind of call back and reinforce some of those ground rules. They can maintain control of the microphone or in a virtual space and meet function. It's really awkward to have a facilitator standing your face, holding a microphone. You're not, maybe not going to grandstand as much versus if, if I have control of the microphone, I might feel a little bit more comfortable, you know, spending more time speaking than I would if somebody's holding the microphone. And that facilitator can also pull back the microphone if needed, if they, if they maintain control of it. So that's something to think about. They can also intervene if there are any kind of verbal, verbal attacks happening. They can reframe, again, they can, hopefully they're seen as a more neutral party and can maybe help be that mediator in some ways. Or they can perhaps at a break, talk to somebody outside or have a staff member talk to somebody outside. So again, they can just kind of be that, that mediator or neutral, neutral role there. They can suggest breaks to, to have those conversations or just to let things cool off if needed before returning to the, to the meeting itself. And there's usually a backup plan, a plan B, sometimes a plan C in the process that they can call, they can call up if needed to make sure that things move on appropriately. There's also a bunch of design techniques that a facilitator can help you think through in terms of how to avoid some of these challenges, how to, how to maybe not give space to some of the grandstanders that might, might show up and things like that. So just something to think about. And obviously, at the end of the day, they also can help disband the meeting and conclude the meeting or, or pause the meeting if needed to really let, let temperatures cool down and make sure that when, when you come back together, it's more productive conversation.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about challenges and barriers to, to participation earlier at this presentation. Let's discuss how can we address some of the digital engagement challenges. As you've noticed in your line of work, a lot of local jurisdictions are moving heavily towards online engagement. We're going back to person a little bit, but online engagement is here and it's here to stay. However, not every group, especially a lot of vulnerable populations groups might struggle with online engagement. So how can we do it? Figuring out in your community who doesn't have internet and providing necessary technology to have access to internet, to fast-speed internet so they can participate in online meeting, they can jump on those interactive digital platforms is one of the solutions to address those digital challenge, challenge, challenges. There are a lot of programs nowadays that actually distribute mobile hotspots and technology to vulnerable groups. So definitely resources are there, it's important to explore. Let's think about the learning curve. Even if you've just, we've distributed those technologies and people have a, you know, a tablet, the wifi and high-speed internet, they still may not have, feel comfortable participating online. I mentioned to, for example, senior folks who might struggle with those online meetings and how do you raise the hand on Zoom? This is what we call a learning curve. There are solutions to that as well. You can set up a separate workshops that just walk community members through those platforms, teach them how to use those platforms. So when the actual workshop or public meeting or online open house happens, people are comfortable participating. You can set those workshops as a separate or before the meeting to address those learning curve technology. Language access and translation is critically important. On the next slide, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about language access. But when we think about engagement challenges, we have to provide those simultaneous or consecutive interpretation online. And depending on that format, it can be challenging, challenging. So definitely testing in advance how the translation is going to work, testing in advance, working with the translators to figure out some troubleshooting solutions that can potentially arise, arise in any public meeting workshop. So when community members join your public workshop and they don't speak English very well and they're using those translation services, you together with your translators or your staff, together with your translator team, think, thought through different alternatives. In the past, for example, in our experience, we anticipated, we anticipated that people will be not, will not be able to connect to simultaneous translation over Zoom because, you know, it's not that easy. So what we, we've decided as a backup plan to provide alternative call-in line for that translation, for that simultaneous translation stream. Finally, making engagement interactive. We've sat through a lot of Zoom meetings and you know, some of them can be not as exciting and engaging as you would hope for. Sometimes people just fall asleep and it is what it is. Engagement online is not easy. So figuring out how do we make those engagement interactives is one of the solutions. What can we do here? Well, for example, you can in public workshops, not necessarily governed by the Brown Act, really there are a lot of choices. We can do online polling, we can invite people to submit comments in the chat. We can tell people, we can go, tell people to go to the breakout groups and have a smaller group conversations. We can introduce a concept of the whiteboard where people can write down their thoughts or suggestions or questions in the real life. So basically, anything that breaks down the monotony of the presentation and anything that provides alternative methods to participate besides listening and raising the hand and asking a verbal question. And we can talk about this for a very long time, about all the different challenges and solutions. So we just wanted to briefly touch on some of them. Let's go back to that language access, what we call a barrier to participation. What do we mean when we say language access? Language access is all about understanding of your language needs in your community. How many people speak, how many people speak language other than English in your particular city or county or district? What are some, how many languages are spoken? What is the proficiency levels with those languages? What are some community resources that already exist that help to provide those translation and interpretation? What are some translation interpretation firms that you can hire to do, to, to deliver those services? This is all language access, figuring out what's in the community, what's the need and how we can address that need. What we put together here for you is the census data gives you a very good snapshot what's going on in your community. For example, in the state of California, forty-four percent of residents speak language other than English at home. Those are your bilingual, triilingual folks. However, another important data point is how out of that forty-four percent, six-point-eight million of those folks have limited English proficiency. And those numbers can be different in every community. Your limited English proficiency is really the key to figure out when the language access is absolutely critical to ensure that inclusive and equitable engagement that we've talked about at the beginning. So definitely account for that and as you review engagement, you know, what has done, what has been done in terms of engagement, what the staff has done? This is one of the kind of review points that, that's important to account for. What are some language needs and what did we do? Did we do enough to address those language needs and provide those participatory opportunities for folks who don't speak English very well? Let's move on to the outreach strategies. We sometimes say that, you know, we've done everything to invite folks to the public meetings. We thought about through all these different participation barriers and provided those solutions. We're all set and ready to go and same ten people showed up, right? We've heard that before, it continues to happen. So how do we do, what do we do to increase the, increase the outreach to ensure that more people are coming to our meetings and it's not the same ten people? It's actually groups that are representative of your community makeup. Starting early in the process, identifying who are those groups, who you absolutely need to engage for this particular project is very important. Because if you identify those groups early, you can plan your outreach, you can plan your targeted outreach. Meeting, meeting, learning, learning the meetings and not meeting just to provide me, provide, provide the feedback and, you know, and, and see you next time. It's incredibly important to create those learning opportunities. It's incredibly important to create those learning opportunities for the community. So when you invite them to the meetings to participate and submit feedback, they feel more comfortable attending and doing what you're asking them to do. As I mentioned, defining target, defining targeted groups is absolutely critical. Are we gonna be reaching out to renters, are we reaching out to folks with different language access needs? Do we really need to talk to our senior population? What about yous? Is that our primary audience for the specific project? That's important to understand. And then go to those groups and ask them, what is the best way to reach out to you? What is the best way to provide those learning opportunities? What is the right formats for us to create so you feel comfortable coming to our public workshops or forums or panels and actually participating and sharing your thoughts and ideas? Providing those listening space is absolutely critical. We've talked about engagement and building trust is one of the benefits of the engagement, of equitable and inclusive engagement. The listening, the listening space does help to build trust where, you know, the staff who organizes those workshops, not just coming with the presentations, like this is what's happening, give us feedback on X, Y, Z, but coming and asking, tell us, tell us what you think, tell us what, how do you envision your community? Tell us how do you envision this space? If we are to build more houses and then this space, how do you envision that in the long term? Listen, listen and ask questions of the your community, creating those spaces is absolutely critical for building that trust. Use culturally and demogra- demographically appropriate outreach materials. Yes, we always put together some outreach kits with approved messages. However, those messages are not gonna resonate with all those targeted groups that we identified. So go on to those groups and run in some tests on the messaging and say, hey, does not, does this resonate? Should we change it? Recently, in our experience, we had the way idea where transit mobility option is not the good word to put on the flyer because you know what, it's not gonna resonate with that demographic that we're trying to reach. Even though it sounds like a good word and we kinda know what it means, we got the suggestion, let's change it. Let's think for the simpler word and also talk, we'll talk about those, thinking through the messaging in terms a little bit later. I already mentioned for accounting for translation and interpretation, but also think about folks with those functional needs, do we need to provide closed captioning? Do we need to provide sign language services? Do we need to design our powerpoints in the way that folks with our with visual needs can actually see the materials that we're presenting? Using focus groups to test your messaging is and visual is one of the ways to ensure that our engagement process is equitable and actually it doesn't take a lot of time and effort to do those quick little tasks with just a few residents to say, hey, does this make sense? What should we change? And as you're thinking through your outreach strategies and reaching out those various groups, budget for traditional digital cultural and outreach channels and media. So your traditional can be, you know, your newspapers, your radio, your TV stations, maybe your traditional flyer in the neighborhood. Our digital, we're very familiar with that Facebook, Twitter, any other platforms that community is using. But also think about all those different ethnicities and cultural groups in your community. How do they get information about things? Some of the communities may have ethnic newspapers that target, target, for example, Spanish folks, Spanish-only radio station. So think about all the different community channels where various ethnicities get their information about even what's happening in their little community within community and utilize, identify those channels and utilize those channels to expand that outreach and participation.
We wanna talk just a little bit about messaging and Hannah just alluded to this in terms of not only the language access component, so you definitely wanna make sure that you're you're literally speaking language that your community can can respond in, but also figuratively. As I mentioned at the outset, some of the things that you all as planning commissioners and even just broader efforts of local agencies, it's pretty technical sometimes and pretty high level. And I'm sure many of you have had this experience where you're trying to get feedback on your housing element or a general plan or things like that. And then you go out and you say, oh, comment on our housing element, comment on X, Y or Z, and nobody, nobody responds. So need to think a little bit more about how to connect some of these things to the the everyday lives of your community. So going back to some of the value statements that Hannah was talking about in terms of one of the goals and benefits of community engagement, so thinking about messaging it in a way, do you wanna, do you want a community where your children can come back and afford to live after they graduate from college? Do you wanna make sure you have the infrastructure there for for that to be possible? Do you have the the housing stock and the the types of housing that will allow that to happen and those types of things? So thinking about what your community is gonna care about and how they're going to be able to respond to some of these conversations that you wanna have with them. So from a messaging standpoint, some of this is gonna look familiar to to what Hannah was just talking about, but knowing your audience, limiting jargon and acronyms. If you're doing a presentation or your staff is pulling together a presentation, I'm trying to minimize content on slides. So it's not just, you know, death by bullet point, we've all sat through those presentations, but trying to use be more strategic about about the words that you use and the 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 factors that you think about. So thinking about the one thing that your community needs to take away from the conversation or that meeting. What are those really high-level key points that you wanna hit home? So we'll leave you with this and then some resources. But these, I know I'm guilty of using a lot of these in my everyday work life. I'm sure some of them you're using on a on a regular basis and are probably familiar with most of them in your in your role as a planning commissioner or planning staff. But the gist here is the general community doesn't understand these, doesn't understand these words. So again, thinking about how can we talk about these concepts, these these concepts, these long-term projects, these big picture things by putting it into to words and phrases and elements that your community is gonna understand and react to and want to engage in. So finally, we just wanna share a couple of resources with you. So this this effort is related to an update to the Planning Commissioners Handbook that we completed last year. So it covers all of the, all of the modules that you can can listen to on this recorded training. But there's a lot more there too, and it is a deeper dive on some things that we do talk about. So has things like CEQA and a deeper dive on community engagement, some of the tools available, the legal landscape, housing, the new housing laws that are coming online, some financing tools and and more. So this is a digital first format, so it's all online. But if you really like the paper copies, you can also print this out and have that as a reference as well. And then finally, just a few more resources that have come online from this this broader project initiative. And we have a whole toolkit on housing and public engagement. The Department of Housing and Community Development has created a housing planning hub site that has sample ordinances. It has videos, it has other tools and funding opportunities and all of the things that you might need in that space. So that can be a great rate resource for you. The CY Housing Plan is also online as well as a housing element video that HCD has also put online to help you explain the housing element to maybe new staff, new commissioners, or even your community. So with that, thank you for watching this module and we hope that you check out some of the other modules available.